Repair is a, basically a maintenance program, so that's why you see it's a 90%, 10% and 90% federally funded and 10% locally funded. The Illinois Division of Aeronautics will not fund a maintenance project, so that's why that one's a 90-10. Our visual navigational aids, that is a 90%, 5%, 5% city. So 90% federal, 5% state and 5% local. Along with our overlay project on our entrance road and parking lot and our T hangar pavement that will happen this spring. And then the visual navigational aids in this crack repair for our runway repainting. We've secured about $2 million in federal and state funding for the city of DeKalb Airport. So that's already funded by the feds and the state. In later years, you'll see the reimbursement for purchase of the Frontier Building. What that building will do for us, that would become our snow removal equipment building. And for the past couple of years, we've pretty much lobbied the FAA to reimburse us for that building. And what the FAA does, they come, they have a formula for how much snow removal equipment you have for the size of airport you have. So they said they would reimburse us 65% of that building. And that, I think that's wonderful and it'll do two things. It'll give us a bigger snow removal equipment building, it'll give us an actual maintenance building for our equipment. But the other 35% of that building could be used to accommodate the fire, police, any other storage that we need to do. Because we would be buying that outright. So I think it'd be, it'd do two things. I think it'd be a great project and a great thing to purchase. You see four phases of security fencing. Security fencing is very, very expensive. So that's why we talked to the FAA and the state about phasing it out to get funding for it. So it's not such a big burden on the city of DeKalb to pay for that, that security fencing. We have four-foot fence and six-foot fence right now. The FAA is recommending that we have a 10-foot fence with three strands of barbed wire on top and actually three-foot underground. That's what they're recommending. So that's why it's so expensive. In later years, a couple of years down the way, we have an overlay project of our main runway. This is about a $4 million project. We're going to have to start lobbying the FAA now for that project. So, been talking to them already about it, but in a couple of years, that's going to be a lot of money. We're going to have to talk about how we're going to pay for our share. There's also ramp overlays and actually land acquisition. We have three, three, four more parcels of land to purchase on our airport layout plan to be complete. Again, tonight, you're just approving our transportation improvement program, not the projects. So we will, I will come back to you to approve our projects when we do them. But we already have three funded projects that we secured funding for already. So if you have any questions, I'll take them. Or if you'd like to talk to our airport consultant engineer, he'll be happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, before I open it up to the city councilman, these three or four items that we're being asked to approve in concept, I realize that we're going to have to approve them at a later date. Are those the kinds of things that are going to then help us as we apply for that repaving project, et cetera, from the FAA?
Yes, this, we pretty, we did two phases for our runway overlay project. As I said, the crack fill and repainting. That's going to get our runway ready to be overlaid. It may be able to, we talked to the FAA about shifting that money to maybe do it in phases. That we do a third of the runway on that money and then do the rest of the runway in two years. And they were receptive to that. So the crack repair could be turned into a actual runway repair so we can do a partial runway overlay with that money.
I'll open it up to any further questions from our council. If not, thank you very much.
Okay, just, just one thing to give you one little update.
Yeah.
On the past four days, we've sold about 7,000 gallons of fuel, just another thousand today. About $25,000 in sales. And we know of two more jets coming tonight and three more tomorrow, so we're having a good month.
Yeah, we got that report initially from Tim, Tom and I.
Yeah, we had another good day today.
Yeah.
Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobson may have a question.
Quick question for you, Tom, before you run away. Were those sales related to local businesses or were those sales that were newly?
Yeah, it was actually car parts.
So those were scheduled from a local business? They would have come in regardless it wasn't necessarily us?
And actually bowling green basketball team flew in on a jet today too.
Sweet. Thank you. Any other questions? Tom, thank you very much. Appreciate it. There's a motion and a second that we approve this concept resolution. Roll call.
Mark Hart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Benukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Okay, we move on now to new or unfinished business. Number one is the request for council direction on Alderman's request to amend the outdoor smoking regulations in the city of DeKalb. And our community development director, Joellen Charlton, could give us the background.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is coming back to you from an earlier discussion that you started back in October where Alderman, Jacobson and Verbic requested the council's reconsideration of changes that were made in 2014 with regard to the smoking ban within the city. I'll give a little bit of brief background and some updates on the review and recommendations of two of our commissions that you sought input from. So again, the history on this, back in 2014, the city made some changes to our code to align with the Smoke Free Illinois Act. And as part of that act, the recommendations were that there would be no smoking inside any building nor within 15 feet of any doorway, air intake, window or other function. The city's revision to that act or adoption of that act went a step further and said that we wouldn't allow any smoking anywhere on outdoor patios. So that is what we're coming back to have some additional conversation about as part of this potential amendment and requesting your direction on. One of the things that, in the history that we looked at was this concept of what constitutes drift. So one of the things that the city's ordinance did was say that you couldn't have smoking anywhere on the patio. The code, if we didn't do anything and allowed the state's action, obviously they wouldn't be allowed to be anywhere within 15 feet of a door open or other air intake. But there is another provision in the state law that talks about drift of smoke. So let's say, for example, there is a breeze and somebody complains that even though they're greater than 15 feet away, that breeze is bringing smoke. It would be up to the restaurant owner or the business owner to take that request, ask the person to stop. If they didn't stop, then they could call enforcement opportunities. And if they chose to do nothing, they could be cited for violations of the act. So in some respects, I think the council's prior discussion of this was that it kind of accommodated the businesses a little bit better by not making that an issue that they needed to be concerned about. As part of the other side of that situation, I know the council, certain council members had conversations about how this may have harmed certain businesses' ability to attract certain types of patrons, patrons that want to smoke, obviously. So in bringing this conversation up, the council asked that it go to two of your commissions, the Citizens Environmental Commission as well as the EDC Commission. So your meeting was in October and these two additional committee meetings were held in November and December. The CEC had their meeting on November 2nd with all but two of their members present for that meeting. Mr. Elekno, who is available in the audience, did provide an article to the group that they had quite a large conversation about during the meeting that talked about exposure to secondhand smoke outside of a bar in a restaurant. And I did attach that information in that article for your reference. Their recommendation was to suggest that the council keep the current provisions of the code in place and that motion passed by a vote of five to one with one of the members opposing and saying that he didn't agree with that action. The EDC members reviewed this recommendation at their December 1st meeting and all seven members were present at that meeting. As part of their discussion, they did take a look at some of the financial data that was provided to the council as well and also took a look at some of the other business costs and things that could come up with an owner considering this, this change. Ultimately, it was their opinion that business owners should be able to make their own decisions about this. So if their constituents are people who don't smoke and they want to cater to those needs, that would be their choice. And if they're, if they wanted to provide opportunities and the patio was large enough to accommodate smoking without violating the Illinois Act, that would be something that they could do. Again, financially, I think the council looked at that information at their October meeting. The data that was provided at that point was based on a fiscal year and took a look at some of the changes between the growth of bar and restaurant tax receipts year over year and really didn't show any substantial change or reduction in those revenues as a result of the city implementing that action in 2014. We did have some requests for some additional information and we looked at financial data for calendar year and then split it down between facilities that have patios versus facilities that don't have patios. And the conclusion, it came to kind of the same conclusion. Since 2014, those businesses that have patios were still increasing at a reasonable rate. About 7% when you account for the fact that we had new commercial restaurants open in 2015, so we kind of subtracted those out. And then for those places without patios, their year over year since the time it was implemented was about 2%. So again, I think there's no real data that supports, you know, that we would gain or lose money by implementing this action. Some options for the council's consideration, again, we're looking for Some options for the council's consideration, again, we're looking for policy direction on how to proceed. You've got both, you know, you've got a positive and a negative recommendation. So the three options, you could follow the recommendations of the Citizens Environmental Commission and recommend no change be made to Chapter 64. If you choose to proceed in that direction, we're, we're just kind of done at that point. We, we won't have to take any further actions on this item at this time. If you choose to follow the Economic Development Commission's recommendations to remove the ban on outdoor smoking and you provide that direction, we would draft that to come back to you for consideration at a different meeting. If there's something in here you didn't hear and you'd like us to evaluate further, we can do that as well. And if we get that direction, we can incorporate that into any document that we would bring back. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, that option, that option three, recommending alternative changes, is, are you saying that there is a, there is a third option? I mean, either we have smoking or we don't have smoking, or why would that be a-
A valid option?
A valid option.
If somebody, I, I don't have any alternative thoughts, but if the council has heard additional commentary that they'd like us to consider or incorporate into a document we bring back, we can certainly look into that further. But I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, before I open it up for council discussion or questions, and I understand we, you want some consensus tonight, we may end up taking a vote either, I guess that vote would be only non-binding to the point where it would give, give staff some suggestion. And I, I see our city attorney looking at me like, okay, Dean. And then I'm, then I'm going to go to Bill. I want you to speak to this also, Bill.
Mayor, we do not have this listed as an action item tonight, so we would ask for discussion and consensus only and not a vote.
Okay, so, so you would prefer that we not vote, just get some kind of consensus?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Okay, before we debate this again, Kate, I'd like to ask Bill Elecno from our Environmental Commission to come up. Bill, if you'd come up to the podium and speak to this, I know you have been very, very involved, and we thank you for your service on the Environmental Commission. You've been past chair, you, I, we reappointed you a few weeks ago, and we thank you for your service, and I know you want to speak to this item.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
I had made some prepared remarks tonight, but after hearing Joellen and some of your comments, there may be a few redundancies in what I say, so I do appreciate your indulgence. But I will try to give you my particular remarks as I prepare them. First of all, my name is William Elecno. I am a longstanding member and former chair of the Citizens Environmental Commission, and I have resided in the city of DeKalb for 38 years. Now, tonight, I wish to share my views on the city's smoking ordinance and specifically those aspects that deal with smoking on outdoor patios. My views, as was indicated, are shared by the majority of the members of the Citizens Environmental Commission, but they are based on my professional expertise and experience of more than 35 years as a university professor in public health with specializations in environmental health and epidemiology. I realize that many smokers today feel overwhelmed by the number of restrictions on smoking. Nevertheless, it is a fact that substantial progress in health promotion has been achieved through public education and enforcement of strict regulations on smoking. This is not unlike the progress we have made in this country due to public health measures such as immunization, disinfection of water supplies, and enforcement of food safety standards. In enforcing restrictions on smoking in outdoor patios, the city of DeKalb has distinguished itself as deeply concerned about the health and welfare of its residents. In my professional opinion, it would be a serious mistake to roll back these restrictions for a number of reasons, which I'll briefly summarize. And please bear with me if you already have some of this information. First, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, secondhand smoke causes nearly 34,000 premature deaths from heart disease, over 8,000 deaths from stroke, and more than 7,300 deaths from lung cancer among non-smokers each year in the United States. The CDC goes on to state that even pre-exposures to secondhand smoke can damage the linings of the blood vessels and cause blood platelet aggregation, possibly leading to adverse effects in individuals with pre-existing heart disease. They list a number of other health issues associated with exposure to secondhand smoke, which range from effects on children to adults. Secondly, the scientific, excuse me, secondly, recent scientific studies are now revealing that secondhand smoke created specifically in outdoor patios has immediate effects on non-smoking patrons. For example, a July 2012 study published in Environmental Health Perspectives, a leading scientific journal in the environmental health field, found significant levels of biomarkers of carcinogenic agents in non-smokers exposed to secondhand smoke at an outdoor bar and restaurant in Athens, Georgia. The increased level of carcinogens persisted beyond the initial exposure, and it was concluded in the study that such exposures may increase the risk of health effects. A July 2015 study published in Preventive Medicine found support for restricting smoking in restaurant and bar patios. Analysis showed reductions in the probability of secondhand smoking exposure of up to 25% following the adoption of a smoke-free patio policy. The authors of the study concluded that bans on outdoor smoking had the intended effect of protecting non-smokers from secondhand smoking exposure, and that such legislation is an effective public health measure.
Bill, could you try to wrap it up now? You're well over your three minutes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I will simply say, I urge you not to overturn the smoking regulations as they apply to outdoor patios in DeKalb. I think it goes against growing evidence implicating outdoor, secondhand smoke is a significant public health hazard, and I think that the health risk, it needs to be mentioned that they don't exist in isolation. In other words, things like traffic, exhaust, other sources, sources of outdoor air pollution can add to the body's burden, in some cases synergistically. So we have to take all of this into effect. Reverting back to the state's requirements basically is going to mean greater efforts in enforcement, and it's going to be a difficult enforcement with somebody actually 15 feet away. We have to consider things like variables, like the concentration of smokers, wind direction, speed, temperature and humidity levels, all of which can impact exposure. And as Joellen said, I think the impetus for this consideration really had to do with financial considerations. And it appears to me that based on the information I've read and a memo to the mayor from members of the city staff, it was identified that there really is no effect on financial resources, at least no evidence of it. So thank you for hearing me on this important issue. I do hope that you will follow through and retain the smoking ordinance as it exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, let's open it up to comments from our city council. We've talked about this quite at length before, but this is what folks want us to do, so. Alderman, Noriko.
While I am inclined to continue the current policy, I wonder if there is a compromise position. Would it be possible to have an ordinance that you could have smoking in a patio that was a certain size or larger? In other words, I'm thinking the patio for Eduardo's really does subject, you know, passersby, you know, potentially to smoke, or the patio of Hillside versus the patio at Fanatico's or even Rosita's. Those are the ones that I, you know, most immediately think about. So I don't know, would that be a possibility?
I, certainly, it's something we could take a look at and find out what those size differences are and what might make sense. I think, and Jason was in attendance at the EDC meeting and heard some of their comments. I know they had some additional thoughts within their recommendations that talked about the use of fans and other things that, that might try to regulate smoke beyond that 15-foot distance. But certainly, if, if you wanted us to take a look at where that might be applicable, we could do that and come back with some further consideration.
You know, I'd be interested what, you know, my fellow council members would think about that as a-
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned Fanatico.
Yeah.
Did you all get a copy of this letter?
Yeah.
I think that was distributed tonight.
Yeah, kind of reflecting on that.
Dave, I can't believe you wouldn't want to speak to something on this issue tonight. But these, these are folks in your ward. I'm very, very sympathetic to Simo and the fact that, that, you know, they're looking at this as a, as a way to help increase their business or at least maintain their business. So I guess I was asking for the same kind of thing, Kate, that you just asked for when you were making your presentation. But let's, let's toss it around here. Thank you, Kate. Any other, any comments from this side? Yes, Alderman, Fagan.
I think, you know, you'd have to go along with, I'd have to go along with the EDC. I've never been one to tell anyone how to run their business. It's not as if it's, if they have a patio that's larger than 15 feet that someone can smoke out there. The business owner can decide whether they want to have smoking on their patio or they don't. This just gives an opportunity for, say, a business or a club that does have a patio, if they desire to have smoking out on their patio, we're not violating any state laws by any means, but I'm not one to tell anybody how to run their business either. And we're not telling them that they can, as long as they got a large enough deck, they can smoke out there. It's up to the business owner whether they're going to have smoking out there or not.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, Mark Ward.
Clarification on the regulations, when it says 15 feet from a window, that means any window because I'm assuming all the windows have to be able to open up?
I believe the secretary references openable window, but we can check that and confirm.
Applicable, yeah.
Applicable. Alderman Jacobson?
Didn't have my hand raised, but I'm certain you knew I had some comments on it.
That was just about it.
Again, I appreciate the report that was put on to the backup for this. I, again, will state my ideological view that, again, if you had someone from one commission saying no, you probably should have had someone from EDC with a different story. I, I think it's rather unfair to portray one point of view to a council member. They should be neutral opinions, not, certainly not one-sided ones. We had the same discussion a few months back regarding lowering, I think it was marijuana fines. There were, there are some people that are very passionately against it, generally in the public health field that get paid to have that opinion, as far as I'm concerned. Again, in looking at the evidence that was provided, it was a very small study of about 25 people, that the evidence and the authors of the article made very clear that it may cause things. It may, they made no recommendations that it did. Much as much of the information out there, again, is purported as fact, but doesn't really take a, a one-sided view on it, but for the fact of the people that are getting paid to actively fight against smoking, either politically, in political favors and/or in salary, regardless of all of that. Again, the, the discussion we've had in this community is that our number one focus is on economic development. The bar owners that I went out and contacted, and again, as someone who asked for this to be on the agenda, I did the legwork and went out and talked to many, the majority of our patio owners. The reality is, the, the data that we're being provided, as I had a discussion with Molly this week, is very difficult to interpret. Again, when you're looking at very small sample sizes, again, if you include to the fact that StarBusters closed and use that as a zero, I mean, it'll throw your numbers so significantly negative that it's not a fair comparison. And then looking at the overall aggregated numbers of all restaurants and bars in the city or all restaurants and bars with patios, they're very different sources of data collection points. So again, I don't think we've been able to distill that data to understand it well enough yet. The bar owners, the people that are out there paying the taxes, paying the liquor licenses, paying the fees to do this, again, a stated goal of our community is to attract students to stay, and nightlife is consistently rated their number one issue of why they don't stay here. Again, looking on that small sample size of the few college bars that do generally entertain college visitors as bars, as the traditional bars, not necessarily as a restaurant style where you're served alcohol with a meal, they are all sure that their numbers are down. And I, I mean, it's across the board, they know their numbers are down. I don't know how to rectify that with the data. Again, they're, they're doing their tax forms, they're doing their, their things, they're saying, you know, our costs keep going up to do business here, and every opportunity we have to do business isn't being afforded to us. Why would we stay here? Why wouldn't we move to a Sycamore? Why wouldn't we go elsewhere to a community where the taxes are lower and liquor licenses are lower? And I'm allowed to run the business? Adding anecdotally, the, the conversations I've had with some of the Sycamore bar owners just in the course of daily business, saying it was the best thing that ever happened to their business. Again, if they're so convinced it boosted their business, and our business owners are so convinced it's hurting their business, there's got to be some correlation to that as far as I'm concerned. And again, as far as I'm concerned, there is an opportunity, if you don't want to be around it, that you can avoid that. You can walk on the other side of the street, you can go out a door, you can avoid sitting in that place where you don't feel comfortable because there's other opportunities for you within that establishment to partake in those activities if you don't like smoke. Some people don't. Some people worry about it as a health crisis, some people worry those things. The reality is banning cars and turning off all of our lights and living by candles would be way healthier for our community residents. I think it would be ridiculous for us to force the residents to do those things based upon one side of the argument.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Alderman Fanukin.
You know, I don't normally go on at length, but I think I will tonight. A couple of other historical notes, you know, that DeKalb actually banned indoor smoking in public facilities prior to the state. We then banned the patio smoking prior to the state, so we have been, traditionally been a leader in public health areas, as Bill Elecno said earlier. Smoking in public venues is a public health issue. The restriction on smoking in patios is a logical extension of the indoor smoking ban. It protects the health of the clientele of the establishments, but more specifically the health, health of the establishment's employees who are in there for their 20, 30, 40 hours a week or in, or into the smoke all the time. It's interesting, the perception of the loss of sales. Statistics show business at establishments with patios has, has increased. In fact, with the data provided, it shows that in the years since the patio ban was established, business is up 34.7%. And that's of particular interest over the last couple of years in light of the continuing decline in the number of NIU students. All but one of the communications I've received on this issue has been in favor of continuing the existing ban on smoking of patios. Comments have been made regarding smokers wandering into traffic, Dave. Comments have been made regarding smokers wandering into traffic, Dave, while smoking. But that's as illegal, illogical and dangerous as texting while driving. The smoking ban needs to continue for the public health of the city and residents at DeKalb. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman-Favor.
I would just weigh in and say that I would, I'm in favor of allowing businesses to choose whether or not they would prefer to have smoking on their patios or not.
Same.
Thank you.
Alderman-Verbic? I support economic development, yes.
I couldn't hear that.
I support the Economic Development Committee's decision, advice.
Mike, how do you, how do you feel?
How do I feel?
How do you feel tonight, Mike?
Well, I'm not going to lie. There have been times in my past where after a 12-pack or two, you know, the natural inclination is, all right, I exaggerate for effect there. But it's one of those things where a lot of times, when you're drinking, your inhibitions go down, which is, you know, also correlates to many other bad choices that people will make. Either driving or so on and so forth. Anyways, when I look at this as an enforcement, how you enforce this with the 15 feet and the open windows and the patios and how that works, and the fact that if I'm sitting on a patio and I'm eating, I really don't want smoke blowing in my face. Illinois is a windy place. I mean, it is. It's flat, it's windy. So, I'm sorry, the smoke's going to blow all over the place. And I agree with Bill, the health things, you know, there's all kinds of things. You have good genes, there's people that smoke all their life and they don't die from cancer. There's people that, maybe I said that the wrong way, there's, you know, going back and I would be in favor of leaving the regulation as it is, just from an enforcement standpoint and from a health standpoint. And the reason people are going to the patios is because when the weather's nice, people like to sit outside and eat. They like to sit outside and drink. That's why they go to the patios. If you did a survey and you checked on that, I mean, that's what they do. If I had my brothers, I'd eat outside as much as possible. You know, I'm going, I grill out all year long because it's outside. And I don't think that we need to take that away, and I don't think that there's that many... How many patios are in Sycamore? I know PJ's, they don't allow smoking out there. Where else we got?
MVP.
MVP.
Maybe skis.
Skis.
And skis.
Ford.
Yeah. I just don't see how we're going to be able to enforce it because the patios aren't that big in DeKalb. There's two of them.
Yeah, a few more.
But you end up with the drift, and then you end up with, I think it's just a nightmare. So, I say we leave it the way it is.
As much as I fully support the move to continue this the way it is, I believe the city of DeKalb has in the past made an admirable move by staying ahead of the state and doing the right thing. However, I don't sense that this council necessarily agrees with that. So unless I hear otherwise, I think that we should probably, since we cannot vote tonight, is to recommend that Chapter 64 be amended to remove the ban on smoking on outdoor patios. And if the council provides this direction, staff directs an ordinance for the council's consideration at a future meeting. Does that make sense to this city council?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Kate?
Although I'd put forward a compromise position, if it has to be either or, I would favor maintaining the current restriction.
We can't vote tonight.
Nope. We have a 4-3. We have a consensus, so...
I break your pardon?
I said there's a 4-3 from the count you just took a second ago, in favor to do what you asked for. I would like to ask, I don't know if they filled out a speaker form, but I know there is one of those bar owners here, if they would like to speak, not putting you on the scene. If you don't want to, you don't have to.
Okay, we'll bring it forward. We'll bring it forward so that this council will make a, we'll take a vote. Any other, any further discussion on that? Okay, let us move along. Item number two, request for council direction on Alderman's request to solicit bids for demolition of the building located at 912 Edgebrook Drive. Again, our community development, Joellen Charlton, will speak to this.
Thank you for the pass direction on the passed item. This, too, is requesting your consideration, no vote, so we're looking for consensus on what, how to proceed and what to bring back to you for a formal vote. Again, this is coming from a couple of Alderman, Verbic and Fanucan, who had requested the council's consideration to move forward with actions that would result in the demolition of the property we purchased at 912 Edgebrook, and then potentially allow for permit, paid parking, or other improvements in support of the Safe Streets Initiative. So we have a little bit of background and history for you tonight and to help you make your decision. As you might recall, the city acquired 912 Edgebrook late last fall for $192,500 and gave authorization to spend about another $58,000 to perform functions that would essentially stabilize the property. When the council discussed that item at that time, there was a few alternatives that were broadly summarized in your memo, and I'll go through them briefly. That was to demolish the building immediately, repurpose the building for uses that might include other public amenities, like an immediate care facility, a grocery store, or a community center. And then the third one was to hold off on post-acquisition decisions until we receive feedback from the AGN Task Force or other community group input. Again, real briefly, the building on the property is a 48,000-square-foot, four-story apartment building constructed of brick and block. It had 47 dwelling units in it. The footprint of the building is about 8,000 square feet of ground area. Parking lot pavement remains on the lot and totals about 28,000 square feet. So the numbers that we talked to you when we brought this forward to you the last time talked about potential asbestos removal within the building, which would need to be done prior to the demolition of the building, that cost was somewhere between $111 and $148,000. And then the actual demolition costs of the building were estimated at $190,000, bringing total cost for both of those functions to about $335,000. Again, that doesn't take into account doing any demolition or repairs, modifications to the pavement. This is just building remediation and demolition. We did do some rough estimates on what, if you wanted to proceed and also go forward with some parking lot improvements. Again, not really having direction if that's something you wanted to do. If you just kept the existing paved area size and improved that and based future cost on an estimate of about $5.50 per square foot, that would result in a parking lot that would provide about 40 parking spaces and cost about $225,000, I'm sorry, $154,000. The higher cost of $225,000 would be if you expanded that parking surface to cover more of the area, so the existing paved area plus the area that would be there when you took the building down. Total cost, when you consider remediation, demolition, and parking lot construction, could all exceed $600,000, based on our current projections. A couple of other things I wanted to note is that the property is Zoned MFR 2, which allows standalone parking facilities as a special use. So while you have accessory parking being permitted, associated with the residential use, if it's a standalone, that's the principal use of the property, you need to go through a special use process pursuant to the Unified Development Ordinance. We did talk about this with the Antiglen North Task Force and advised them. They were very excited when they heard about the acquisition, back when the acquisition occurred, and talked to them about future information coming forward at some time. We haven't gotten to that point yet, so we don't have any official feedback from that group as of yet. Financially, we know that the city council is committed to maintaining their 25% fund balance, so I wanted to give you some information in the financial section that talks about what happens if we spend that money. This is not a budgeted expense, so any proceeding forward with this recommendation would require that this be funded for this, from the city's general fund balance. So if you consider that $350,000 cost just to do the remediation and demolition, we would probably exceed the fund balance, I'm sorry, the fund balance would be $9.34 million or 24.54%. So we would fall slightly below the recommended 25% fund balance. If you wanted to maintain that 25% fund balance, Molly was able to do some projections for us, just to give you an idea, you would not be able to spend more than $210,000. So again, not knowing where the council wants to go with this project, obviously anything more than that, we're going to extend even further below the 25% fund balance. One of the things I haven't talked about yet is, and we could come back if that's your desire, is to spend a little bit of time determining what kind of money this project could make. So if we do a 40-space lot or 100-space lot, we could take a look at both the city's parking rate structure and NIU's parking rate structure and come back to you with some estimate of how we might be able to offset some of those costs long-term by selling permits. Again, that would be something we would need direction on. The last thing we would need direction on, again, if you're looking for those parking improvements, is what are we doing? Is it a short-term solution, so we're just doing something temporarily until we have a longer-term solution? Or is this the long-term solution? And at that point, we're looking at co-compliance with adding curbs and landscaping and lighting, obviously all of that adding significantly more to the cost. We're looking for direction from the council as to whether you're just looking to do the remediation and demolition and stop there and come back later with some of the other recommendations after we have a chance to talk more to the Antiglen Task Force, or whether you want to have us go ahead and prepare what those total costs would be and bring something back to you. We could do it in either one stage, so all of it coming back together at one time, or we could phase it where we do the acquisition, demolition, give you the information about the other, but then perhaps not proceed on that right away.
I appreciate, I appreciate you verbalizing those options, but they don't align themselves so well with the options that we got in the backup material. The options that I thought we were to decide tonight or get some consensus, number one, demolish the building immediately, which I believe aligns itself with what Alderman Verbic and Alderman-Fanucan would like to see. Number two, repurpose the building for uses that might include an immediate care clinic, grocery store, and our community center. I haven't heard too much about that. And then three, hold off on post-acquisition decisions until the feedback is received from the Antiglen North Task Force and/or other community members and groups. I don't know what other community members and groups there may be out there. What I've heard is that people would like to see it down. I'm going to ask Gene Lowry for his thoughts on this, especially in light of the fact that we have some parking restrictions that will go in to affect up in that area, and so parking could play in into that whole dynamic. But before I do, Gene, I'd like to ask Bill, Fanucan, and Dave Jacobson, have you gotten any sense from your involvement as liaisons to Antiglen North? And Dave, that's your ward. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, first of all, we've had some brief conversations in Antiglen North Task Force. Obviously, they were glad that we acquired the building, and I think they also look forward to it coming down. As to any short-term or long-term solutions, I think that's so open to debate at this point. You know, there have been a number of ideas put forward, you know, that a grocery store, somebody threw out, somebody else threw out an immediate care clinic. We briefly talked about parking, particularly in light of the Safe Streets. But I think that the main thrust of Mike and my request was to take care of getting the building down before, you know, every day it stands as a potential liability for the city. And I think that's one of the things that we'd like to see eliminated.
Dave, is that pretty much a parallel what your thinking is, or?
No.
Okay.
Pretty much the complete opposite.
Well, go ahead.
Again, I don't think we've had any real substantive, we've had one meeting with the task force since we have acquired the building. We had a very long, in-depth conversation at that meeting about, again, process, not necessarily about actual action steps or anything else. It was briefly mentioned at the meeting as a potential asset, and as far as I'm aware, staff has made no attempt to find any, or spent no time in finding any interest in the building yet because we haven't given that direction. The task force hasn't talked about it. Again, it's a solid, concrete building that's boarded up, which is unfortunate at this point, but the reality of a parking lot ever paying itself off in any of our lifetimes or your kid's lifetimes, or maybe even your grandkid's lifetimes, is zero. And I think we're rushing to a conclusion that we don't yet have any answers for. We have no money budgeted for it at this point in this year's budget. We have no indication from the task force of what their thoughts are. We don't even have Camero's yet advertising or looking into options with this building. I mean, we're still, at this point, at the very base stages of the community outreach that we're intending to solicit through the task force, both because members haven't been able to be there and because the first several meetings were so dominated by the process of going through with Camero's and going through the slideshows effectively and sharing data. I just think we're way, way, way too early in the process that nobody's even really looked at it as a viable, possible reuse of that building.
Okay.
I mean, you could not build a 40,000-square-foot building in that neighborhood of any type for under half, for under $5 million at this point, based on build costs. Again, it's still maybe an asset at what we were able to acquire it at, that it makes sense that someone of very deep pockets, somebody like another or multiple other agencies, whether it be the school district, the park district, Kishawaki Hospital, and Northwestern, who has very deep pockets, another private medical organization that I've heard is now looking into the neighborhood, several nonprofits. I mean, there's several people that could come together on a project like that to make it make sense, as far as I'm concerned. I just don't think we've done any of that due diligence yet, and I worry we're rushing to a conclusion.
Thank you. That answered my question. Gene, I'm going to have you just address it, and then I'm going to turn it open again to the city council. Do you have any thoughts on that building and what you've heard here? You've heard two different thoughts from our two liaisons up there.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, Mayor. I think, I think one thing the council should look at is really the viability of the building and what it could be used for, because it is concrete and steel. And I have to preface this by saying I'm not an expert, I'm not an engineer in any way. Fire would probably have a better idea structurally about it, but we know it's in very, very bad shape. It might be able to be reused as a rental property, which would go against the purpose of decreasing population density. But as far as the ability to gut that and take down walls, support-wise, I don't know what other uses it could be used for, and it would seem to be a tremendously... what other uses it could be used for, and it would seem to be a tremendously expensive proposition. But I would recommend, if anything, that we research that, if we really considered a viable building for any type of use. Parking's certainly a problem in that neighborhood, and I wouldn't look at it solely from the perspective of revenue the city could generate. There are many interests up there that would probably be interested in purchasing the property, to expand their own property, to create parking, or to do something, certainly is an option, but it, we know that that whole side of town, in the Greek Row area, is not in the same situation, or in the same compliance with the current UDO, so parking's at a premium. I think overwhelmingly, decreasing population density is very important in that neighborhood. And I think our rental property surplus, whether we believe it's statistically significant, or if it's just anecdotally understood, but we know that the rental property surplus has really created some serious public safety problems. So I think it's a tremendous opportunity to, for sure, not make it another rental property. If the building came down, I mean, it's a neighborhood that's really not so much solely students, there are many families there, although I would consider some certain enforcement issues. Maybe there's a park district component to this, to create a recreational area for kids and families in that neighborhood. All I know is for sure, is the building's not safe. And we've got it boarded up and secured now, but boarded-up buildings get broken into all the time. And a fire could easily occur in that building, and although it is primarily concrete and steel, it would be nice to have a decision sooner rather than later.
Okay. Alderman Verbic.
Alderman Jacobson, do you have a time proposal that you're interested in? Ninety days, what do you think is fair for AGN committee discussion and further consideration?
I wouldn't hazard, as merely a liaison that has had really no input in their decisions. Again, they have not gotten to the meat of any issues yet. They were basically just unleashed at the last meeting, at the very end, and what we had hoped to have on last week, we're now having it at the end of this month. Again, it's not, certainly not going to be my decision, based on what the recommendation is. I'd love to see some effort involved, and that could take, again, you're not in development season, you're in the winter. If the issues that the building is being boarded up is a problem, again, we can fix that problem rather cheaply. You can install a two-hundred-dollar alarm to monitor with motion sensors in that building. It's not ideal, I live two doors down from that building, I have to pass by it every day, it's ugly. I had hoped we'd board it up on the interior, as I had asked, we did when we purchased the building. That's not how it ended up playing out, whether because it couldn't have been, and which very likely was the case. Again, I just don't think we've put any time and effort into seeing, we don't know if the building is repurposable, we don't know where the support structures is. From the information we were given prior to the sale of the building by the former owner, again, the roof was in new condition, the exterior is solid concrete, MDU, and the structural engineer that she brought in claimed there was one area that needed to be assessed, but overall, the building was very strong and very well-built, and didn't pose a safety hazard in terms of the building structure itself. So, again, if we knew it was an auto situation, if we knew it was a building that was literally falling into the ground, like the Campus Cinema building is right now, I would have a very different understanding of the possibilities of it. In those cases, those are teardowns, this one may not be, and I don't know how to spur that discussion, both at that level and within the city, to see what our options are. I'd love to give it at least six months to get through them, and to get through the, without getting through with the Camero's stuff, the task force isn't going to get to any real meat-and-bones issues at this point, so I don't know. I wish I had a better answer for you, I don't know.
Alderman Vagan.
Obviously, we don't know what we really want to do with this building here. I understand, you know, it's a well-built building, steel building, Joyce of Masonry, but another price of it, to bring it back to where it should be, and that it can be, obviously, not cost-effective. One thing that I always watch council, and I'm upset with when I see it, is, well, it's going to be around six-hundred thousand, let's go out and get bids, and see where they'll come in. I suggest that, we don't know what Antiglen North's going to do, or suggest, okay? I suggest that we go out, and we get bids for asbestos removal, demolition, and possibly take it a little farther for a parking lot. Maybe just go with the demolition, you know, bids, and the asbestos removal. But at least we'll know where we're at, and know how much money we're getting into, because we're dipping into our, into our fund, which the fund is there to be used, if, I mean, does nothing for us just sitting there. But I think that's, at least we're going to be a little more prepared, and it may change someone's mind on whether they want to keep it, or get rid of it.
So you'd be comfortable with elongating this process a little, concurrent with getting some bids for demolition, and perhaps some further estimates on parking lot, asbestos removal, et cetera? See what Antiglen North, if they have any suggestions?
Yeah.
And again, and other community groups, as we've suggested.
But at least let's find out where we're at with the dollar.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah, Bill, Fanoukhan.
And actually, see, that's all Mike and I have asked for, is to get bids to see what a demolition would cost us, and then to proceed from there.
Okay.
Along the time as these, as we go out to bid, we know we're going to have an Antiglen North Task Force meeting. You know, some of the ideas that I mentioned before didn't necessarily just come from the task force, but came out of those community meetings that we had also. So I think that as part of this extension that Dave's looking for, at least we get some more information to help us decide where we truly want to go. And that's all Mike and I have suggested.
Good, great. Alderman Noriko.
Okay, hang on, everyone, I'm going to agree with Alderman Jacobson.
Again?
I know. It's like the earth shakes. But seriously, I didn't understand, you know, the rush, particularly since the Antiglen North Task Force is just kind of developing its steam, you know, kind of moving forward so that they really can be a body that provides input. I would, you know, if Alderman Fanoukhan and Verbic were basically looking for, you know, some consensus to get some more information, I can support that, but again, with Alderman Jacobson's comments in mind, let's not, you know, rush ahead of ourselves.
It appears that we all pretty much are on the same page here, it's just the speed and the dispatch with, you know, with which we work on this. So I guess that is consensus, is that let's try to get bids, let's see that Antiglen North and the agenda that we work with those folks, I know Aaron and Patty, you're working with Antiglen North, make sure that that brings up on, you know, bring that up on their agenda. Yeah, Mike?
How long would we anticipate for the bid process? Any guesses?
I would say we're probably, contractors are going to want to go in and see the building to get an idea of the structure of it, we're probably, if we contact a number of bidders, forty-five days.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Joe Allen, does that give you consensus?
Thank you.
What you want to do? Okay, thank you. Let's move along now, that was the last item on our regular agenda. Does anybody need to speak to any items on the agenda? If not, let's go into I, Reports, Communications, Alderman Jacobson.
I know I had something earlier in the day, but it has slipped my mind this late at night.
See, you're still recovering.
It's only twenty after eight, Dave.
It's been a rough weekend. Yeah, no, I don't have anything off the top of my head, I guess, tonight.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Fanoukhan.
No report at this time.
Alderman Markort.
I missed the last meeting because I was on a trip, celebrating twenty-fifth wedding anniversary. And on that trip, my wife and I were sitting on the beach in San Diego, having breakfast, having a breakfast, and the table next to us was a young couple that were in San Diego from San Francisco, because San Francisco's cold all the time. So they were in San Diego to warm up, and they actually graduated from NIU. So it's a small world. We talked and shared some viewpoints on DeKalb. They graduated about ten years ago, and are coming back in April, so I hope to meet them at Fatty's when they're back to share with them. Part of my concern was what they've heard about DeKalb since they graduated. And not necessarily all in a positive light. And to be sitting on the other side of the country, and to have a discussion about DeKalb in that manner, was a little disconcerting to me. So I would say that my goal for 2018, or at least, what do you call the New Year's resolution, is to do the best that we can to reverse that viewpoint. Because I'm tired of that. I really am. So, that's my resolution.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Vagan.
No report.
Alderman Noriko.
I read something a week or so ago, that I thought would be appropriate to bring forward to this group, and both to the council and to the citizens. Betrays my age, it was in the AARP bulletin, from the AARP CEO, Joanne Jenkins. I'd also like to add that I'm making these comments in the spirit of remembering a dear friend, a college teacher of mine, who, I went to her memorial mass yesterday, over three-hundred people were there. So this is someone who had significant impact, someone who always promoted respect. The comments, quote, "Restoring civility to public discourse begins with each of us individually, how we talk to and relate to one another, taking the extra step to understand why a person believes differently than we do, and being able to disagree with one another while still respecting the other person. It begins with each of us setting a good example by practicing civility in our personal lives. If we can do that, maybe we can change the tone and restore civility, not only to Washington, and I would add to DeKalb, but also across our great nation." And as I said, this is in honor of Sister Clemente Davenlin of Dominican University.
Thank you, Kate. Alderman Verbic.
We had a productive meeting with the DeKalb County Building Trades. We discussed past projects, current projects, and the potential of future projects, and they're very excited to be collaborative partners with the city of DeKalb. Happy birthday, Alderman Jacobson. And congratulations, Alderman Fanoukhan, inductee to the Chamber Hall of Fame, is that correct?
Actually, that happened a year ago.
Oh, okay. Your picture looked great in the paper.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
That wasn't fake news, it was just old news. Alderman Vagan?
No report.
I have just a couple of things. I got a note today, perhaps others did too, from John Littlefield, the United Way, who is one of the coordinators of the 211 Information System. And the fourth quarter results showed that a hundred and forty calls were received during that period in DeKalb County, indicating a continued level of community awareness of 211. Besides general information, the top two call inquiries were for rent payment assistance and for utility assistance. And she says, "As in the first quarter, referrals most frequently matched services provided by the Salvation Army, DeKalb Township, Catholic Charities, and community contacts." So I, I think as 211 rolls out, got to give a lot of credit to Don Littlefield and to Paul Calligan to get that done. I think we'll see more participation. The other thing is, is that I received a notification, again, perhaps you did also, from Lisa Freeman, who provided, and for anyone who is interested in seeing how this university and this community will be commemorating the February fourteenth tragedy of 2008, it's on Forward Together Forward off the NIU website. There will be a number of remembrance events for the shooting at Northern from February nine through February fourteenth. Included will be a number of receptions honoring first responders, which include our police and fire and others. And I know you fellows and your folks will be involved in that, as will the city council. We may be asked to participate in some ways, I hope you guys stay up to snuff, we'll try to continue to give you the information as a city council. But I thought I'd want to talk about this tonight, because our next city council meeting will not be held until midway through that remembrance week, so. And that's all I have to report. Ruth Scott, our deputy city clerk, do you have anything to report?
No report.
Dean Frieders, our city attorney?
No report.
Our city manager, Ann Marie Gora.
Thank you, Mayor. The main item I want to remind, excuse me, the council and the community is Wednesday night, 5:00 PM. There will be a special committee of the whole meeting to go over the council's goal-setting session. For the community's background, this will be at the DeKalb Public Library in the Builder Family Room, which is the normal conference room that the Public Library Board meets at, so it's in the lower level. So 5:00 PM, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager, Patty Hoppinstad?
No report.
Police Chief, Gene Lowry?
No report.
Finance Director, Molly Talkington?
So there's this documentary out right now called All the Queen's Horses, and I think it is worth checking out, so we're going out as like a finance group network in Illinois, and we're going to see the movie, and it's about Dixon, Illinois, and the large fraud that happened. So this is really a good, I think, opportunity to learn more about what not to do in finance and local government, but in a different way of kind of getting that information, right? There's a documentary, so it's not just me speaking to you. So if you want, I think that'd be, I hope it's interesting, because I'm going to go see it next weekend, so.
How long is that documentary? Is it like an hour program?
I think it's probably a little bit longer than that, because it's just at the regular movie theater, so.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But I think it'll be interesting to hear more about it.
Is it local now, or?
We're doing it in Vand and Gamsberg, so it's there at 2:00 PM next Saturday, but I think it is kind of going around different theaters, so I've seen it posted in other places, too.
You might want to check with Emily Faulkner, too, at the library, and see if we could do something similar here. It is so close, it's my hometown, Rita Crenwell is her name, I went to school with her brother, so I have an empathy for what's happening back there. What they didn't do, and what, how they weren't vigilant, I think was pointed out. But what this woman was able to do over an extended period of time, it's unbelievable. So, yeah, All the Queen's Horses, I have not seen it, I have heard about it, so. Thank you, Molly.
You're welcome.
Eric Hicks, our fire chief?
No report.
Community Development Director, Joe Ellen Charlton?
Hi, two quick things, just to note that I too share Alderman Markort's resolution to work on the message that goes out regarding the community. As many of you know, I work on a monthly basis with a group of business leaders in the community, and they're having this very conversation. And really disappointed, and wanting to come up with strategies on how to get the right message across, because they really believe that there are very good things happening in the community, and we need to focus more on those and less on the negative. So from our perspective in community development, we want to continue to work with you and the council and the administration to implement your the council and the administration to implement your, your goals and policies the best that we can, and make positive changes, and then also, you know, communicate those in the right way, so that the next time you're in San Diego, Alderman Markort, you have a better, more positive experience. Also to report, the Planning and Zoning Commission last week looked at a potential tax amendment that was brought forward by an applicant, and that tax amendment would make changes to the code that would allow for indoor climate-regulated storage facilities in a commercial district. So the purpose of the commission's discussion was to talk about, should it be permitted? Should it be a special use, and what types of restrictions should be considered? We had a really good amount of public feedback, all in support of trying to figure out a way to make it allowed in commercial districts. They felt that we were being proactive in coming up with strategies to fill some of our empty spaces, so we'll be looking at provisions that limit it to only in buildings that have been vacant for a period of time, and also at this point for special uses. So their direction to us was to craft some of that language and bring it back for further or formal discussion for a vote at their February 7th meeting, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you, Joellen. Public Works Director, Tim Holdman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let council and residents know that Assistant Public Works Director, Fager, and I met with the school district this past week. We, they shared with us the details of their lead in drinking water testing program, and we believe that the school district is taking the appropriate actions to address the results. They are abandoning or replacing all of the drinking fountains which were found to have high levels of lead. They're posting signs in the sinks in the classrooms, hand washing only, for the sinks that had high, for all the sinks. They're also implementing a flushing program, and this is particularly important because the lead comes from the pipes that the water is sitting in. It's not from the ground, it's not the lead, there's no lead in the wa- water that we pump out of the ground, but rather, when it sits in the pipes and is in contact with lead-containing fixtures, that lead goes into the water. And so a flushing program is the most effective way to keep the lead out of the water, so that the water's not in contact with those fixtures for a prolonged period of time. And they're going to implement that flushing program, and then they're going to re-sample to ensure that their corrective actions have addressed the problem. Also would like to mention that we did have a major snow event about a week ago, it's hard to tell tonight when you go out, there's no snow anywhere, but we had a prolonged operation of about 36 hours from Sunday night all day Monday into Tuesday morning. I think we did an excellent job. We were very judicious in using our resources early, and, and we did have to spend most of the day on Monday out there plowing, so kudos to Andy Rye and all the guys. And then last, we did have a couple of major main breaks this past weekend. They occurred in the parking lot of Walmart. And with nowhere for the water to go from underground, it caused significant damage to the Walmart parking lot. Our guys were out there on Saturday most of the day doing the repair, but we will have a significant expense, probably in the 20 to $30,000 range in terms of repairing that parking lot. That's all.
Alderman, Chris Randall, our Human Resources Director?
No report.
And finally, Mark Thorson, our Information Technology Director?
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, as you know, we've had some difficulty with the livestream on YouTube. There's no other way to say it except that YouTube notified us that in some way, shape, or form, we violated something on their, their terms and conditions in use of the livestream. Unfortunately, it doesn't point to exactly where we would have violated it, nor did it really give us any specific information. We followed the rules that they've provided us for appeals, we've gotten no response. I've reached out across the country through a trade group that I belong, that the city belongs to, and the response was either you were stuck for 90 days without a livestream until they decided to turn you back on per their policy, and there is no assurances provided that they won't do it again in some way, shape, or form, and, and then a couple exceptions that we're able to get it turned on quicker. So it wasn't looking very positive. I've gotten some new contacts through YouTube, we're pursuing that as we speak, and I've also tasked my team to, to look at alternative capabilities to bring our livestream back on in some fashion. So we're, we're continuing to work on this, and it's frustrating to say the least, but we're, we're doing everything we can to try and bring this back online for the citizens.
Do you have any feel for, for how many folks watch us on YouTube? I understand that for those people who simply go to our website, they can get streaming of tonight's council meeting, for example, off of our website. This, YouTube was simply a, another option for folks? Is that, is that a fair?
Correct. Beyond Channel 14, which is working just fine, the, the livestream provides those that either don't live in the community but still are interested in what's going on, and/or those that aren't home and, and want to be able to watch in some other location. It provides them an opportunity to be able to do that remotely. I, I got to be honest, I haven't looked at the, the statistics to find out how many subscribers there were, but I think for the channel, there's a significant number of subscribers. How many view at any point in time, we're, we're monitoring that, and we, we try to collect that as we go.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, Alderman Fagan.
Have we looked at, like, face, using the city's Facebook account to do a livestream from Facebook?
That's one of those.
Or a rebroadcast?
That's one of the things we're trying to figure out, how we can, how we can do this. We can rebroadcast through YouTube. The only thing they've stopped is the livestream.
Okay.
So you can go back and look at previous council meetings, and, and those are there.
Okay. Thank you.
Is, is some, some organization like the Illinois Municipal League, I mean, we, we do, we have a lot of dealings with, with them, could they not give us some assistance here, or?
I can certainly reach out to them. The, the group that I belong to has hundreds of municipalities across the country, and it's working directly with their IT directors, but I can certainly work with the city manager.
Do any other communities have this problem?
That's just it, there's, there's some that, that have this in place, but they have not experienced what we have. The, the few that have, I've gotten mixed results on, on how they were able to rectify it. Some were, some had to go the full 90 days before they were brought back on, others somehow got through and were able to get a response and get it switched on quicker. And we're, there doesn't seem to be a rhyme or reason as to what one agency did differently than another, they all seem to have followed the same script.
Did we hear of this problem through a constituent of ours, a resident? Did we hear from it through YouTube? How did we get that information?
Through YouTube. We, as we go through the process of bringing the council meetings online, we check all of the, the accounts that help us livestream this through a, a Google account, and that's where we found that the, where we found the notice. And then we were able to go back and start researching what, what it was, because again, the, the notification's just extremely vague. It says, basically, there's a strike against your account, and please see this link, and this link is just basically along Terms and Conditions, or Terms of Service page. And then it provides us with an appeal form, which we filled out, and we've sent numerous emails. I just recently got a new email account that was provided by another community as another alternative to try and get in touch with Google.
Keep us up to date on that, would you?
Absolutely.
As you attempt to do that. Any else, anything else for the good of the cause? Entertain a motion to adjourn? There is no executive session, we have no recess tonight. Ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion seconded.
They're moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? We are adjourned.